Being that it's after six o'clock, I would like to call this meeting to order. Uh, if I could, uh, is Mr. Waters online or is he available to give us the invocation?
Yes.
If you could, I'd appreciate it.
Lord, we take the opportunity to conduct business from City of Jasper and take all the lessons that we've had during this pandemic. Lord, we just ask you to watch over everybody that, uh, is on the front lines of working and trying to heal people. Lord, we just give you the grace and the glory and the mercy of the Lord. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Uh, Mr. Snav, if you would, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Eric. Yeah, I believe everyone has received a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions, uh, to that agenda, Mr. Douglas?
Uh, there have been no changes to the agenda, no sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can I hear an emotion to adopt the agenda, please?
Motion to adopt.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. We will go forward with the agenda. Our next item is, uh, approve the minutes from the March 24th meeting. I know that it was a brave new frontier that we endeavored, but I think we did fairly well and, uh, does anybody see anything on the minutes that they feel need to be addressed or, uh, altered?
Move we approve.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear any dissent? The minutes are approved. We will go on to new business. Uh, item A, public hearing, request rezoned parcel number 041062 at Highway 53 West from a C2 designation to an R3 designation. Uh, I believe this was at the last month's meeting, excuse me, but something arose and, uh, they needed to do a little bit more research on it and, uh, so, uh, if I could get Mr. Douglas to address that request.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and, uh, board and all the public in attendance. Uh, due to the uniqueness of the Zoom meetings, I would ask that as questions are asked, um, uh, if you could just announce who are and what particular issue you're addressing, uh, just to help for record keeping. Uh, Mr. Clear and others, um, additionally, what I'd like to, uh, point out is we have David Siphon along with our partner, uh, land use and consulting partner Rebecca Kiefer with Clark Patterson. By way of some background, um, there was a staff report generated, a staff analysis pursuant to the zoning ordinance and, uh, this was tabled in light of some information that had been, uh, shared by the, um, airport, uh, and, and as to how the configuration of the table for some initial information. I will ask for Rebecca to, uh, just provide some comments from the staff report and, uh, things that I'll add and, uh, likewise with Mr. Waters and, uh, Mr. Siphon. And Rebecca, can you take it away?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Certainly, yes ma'am.
Good, good. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'll give just kind of a, a really brief rundown of the project itself and then the, the zoning analysis, um, and then kind of turn it over to you for, for comments and questions. Um, so it, it sounds like you're already fairly familiar with the site. Um, the request itself is for rezoning from C2 to R3 to allow for the redevelopment, for the development of a 76 unit, eight restricted multi-family development. It consists of 6.07 acres, uh, along Highway 53 and there has been some coordination with the airport, um, where the, the airport personnel have indicated, um, that multifamily is incompatible, uh, given the proximity to the airport. Um, so that development consists of four two-story buildings that wrap a parking lot and with noted, then these will have a pavilion, gazebo and a community garden. I'm getting some feedback, are you guys hearing me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Then I'll just ignore it. Um, all right, so the, uh, analysis required by the zoning ordinance is contained within, uh, section 94 dash 43 of your zoning ordinance and, um, based on the specifics of the request, uh, staff did a detailed analysis and that is contained within the staff report that, that you received, um, but I'll go through, um, some of the highlights from that staff report, uh, highlight some of the, the significant considerations, um, made, uh, based on the, made us come to the conclusion that we, uh, we came to. So the property is located in the West Jasper Gateway Corridor, uh, care area, uh, of the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan is a guiding policy document that articulates the community's vision and is to be consulted when you're making certain discretionary, uh, legislative decisions, uh, like amendments to the zoning map, which are rezoning. So we consulted for, um, you know, based on that criteria in section 94 dash 43, um, to get an understanding of what the vision for that area is. So the corridor in general seeks, uh, new development that is mixed use in nature, um, and the desired uses noted in that are institutional, medical, office, restaurant, retail and service and residential does appear as a possibility, but the comprehensive plan specifically qualifies, um, that it, it only desired where deemed appropriate. Um, so staff found through that analysis that, um, conditions like the state route, uh, the adjacent land uses, um, the potential airport runway protection zone issues, um, deemed incompatible and therefore not in conformity with the comp plan. Um, so based on that, uh, staff recommends denial of the application, but in order to adequately, um, you know, give you a full, um, you know, recommendation, um, in case you make a different finding as a recommending body, we also in the staff report included some suggested, uh, conditions of approval and those are contained, um, numbers one through six in the staff report for your consideration. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do, let's see. The next, yes, sir.
I, I did want to point out that I believe the applicant and/or their representative, uh, is here and I do want to make sure that, uh, if there's some information that either we have or the applicant would like to share, I think there is a feature for them to, uh, share. Uh, I will stop sharing at this moment to enable them, uh, to share if need be. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
No problem, I was just going down the list. Does, uh, Mr. Waters have any input and then I'll ask them if they have any, uh, thing that they would like to add to it as well.
The obligation, the signings, the advertisements, land zones, that everything that we're supposed to do to get this to the public, but also for the last week, week and a half, I've been trying to get some information from the, uh, airport, uh, just to make sure because we had gotten word that that might be an issue. As of last Thursday or Friday, I got in touch with Mr. Phil Everly, who is, uh, like the design person or engineer or something with the airport, with FAA and he is the one that sent us this information that we got today. I tried to get it before today, but I, it just wasn't possible. He was out of town on a, uh, a function that he couldn't get out of and, uh, so that's where this information comes, but the airport is talking about extending the runway by more, five hundred four feet and that will be right next to the DOT property and that's, uh, helicopters come in on the, uh, west, uh, the west side of the airport and airplane coming in on the right side. So other than that, I can't speak to the airport, city can't, governed by the FAA. Mr. Everly was going to try to get on this stage. He's traveling, but he said if there's any way possible, he would come into the program as quick, but he got some surgery.
And, and I am on, I am on the call.
Okay, Mr. Everly, thank you.
Mr. Everly, do you have any, uh, concerns or anything that you would like to add with the, uh, the staff report dealing with the airport?
Uh, n- nothing other than just, just the, um, the statement I provided earlier. So we're, we're the, um, I'm the president of Lead Edge Design Group, where the FAA approved planning and engineering firm for the airport have been with the airport a long time. Um, that criteria is a function of once an airport accepts federal funding, it then operates under the strings attached to that federal funding, one of which is that residential adjacent to the airport or on the airport is incompatible and used. So, um, that, that's where that, that restriction comes in at the federal level as far as that being adjacent to the airport. I think you see the wording in that statement, so, um, uh, anyway, that, that, that's what I have to add.
Okay, I'm not sure if the zoning board has your statement in front of them, so if you could read it to them.
Yeah.
So that they would know, would, you know, have a good understanding as to what you're talking about.
Sure, so this is a specific, um, in all the FAA criteria boiled down to one specific sentence from, uh, one of the, um, FAA guidance documents is, uh, in a section, uh, entitled residential use of land on or near an airport property. The sentence is this, "The general rule on residential use of land on or near airport property is that it is incompatible with airport operations because of the impact of aircraft noise and in some cases for reasons of safety, depending on the location of the property." That, that's the FAA take in a nutshell in that one sentence.
Okay. Do you have anything else, uh, to address with this concern?
I, I do not.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for your, uh, input and for your, uh, information. Uh, do we have a representative for the applicant?
We do. Uh, Emily, are you there?
I mean, can you hear me now? Like, I was having trouble reading myself. I'm sorry about that. I, uh, did a PowerPoint because I thought it might be easier than you guys looking at me. I don't think I'll ever get used to these Zoom calls. So I've shared, shared our screen, um, and I, sometimes there's a little bit of a delay, so let me know if I need to slow down or go back. But I'm here on behalf of Tischko Properties and Tischko is intending to build a 62 and older property. So you may be somewhat familiar with the senior properties, um, that you may have heard of the 55 and older properties, which still allows families to live there. Um, the 62 and older is purely just for residents that are only 62 or older. So it is a true senior property and we call it club living because we offer those types of amenities that seniors may want. So this isn't just an apartment complex. This is really, um, a club-like environment that combines the residential and commercial components to get, um, seniors to have a place to live and it's for those seniors that aren't quite ready for assisted living or a personal care home, but still may not want the upkeep of a, a home and may want to have the community of living around other seniors, that, that type of, um, social environment. So let's see, going through, Tischko has over 3,400 units in Georgia and they are a long-term owner. They don't have a third-party management. They own and manage their own properties and they will have no plans of selling the property. So unlike a lot of developers that come in and flip the property, Tischko intends to own and manage it. They've been in business since 1975 and they currently focus primarily in smaller jurisdictions such as Jasper. They don't like to build in big cities. We like, we like to be more of a part of the community and so that's why we look for places like Jasper. I'm showing you what is our site plan and if you look at the site plan, you see that they've got the three two-story buildings for residences, residential and that'll be for apartments and then those will be independent living, so they'll have their own kitchens, bedrooms, just like a normal apartment, but it would be for senior. And then the two-story community building is where all of the activities would take place. So there would be a dining hall, there would be a place for residents to have community meetings, for bridge, for things like that. And then I also want to point out, if you look around, there's quite a lot of existing natural buffer around the property. There are a lot of trees because this is an undeveloped site. So the goal is to keep all of those trees along either side, I call it the west and the east, but it looks kind of like the top and the bottom, the way that this is oriented. The goal is to keep that landscaping around the ti- the si- all three sides of the property and then to add landscaping in the front and then around the buildings itself. There will also be a community garden at the bottom, a pavilion and a gazebo for residents. And then in addition, this is going to be serviced by a bus line. So there will be a bus to take the residents to the grocery store and to the doctor and to shopping, which is a very popular amenity that we had. The improvement is we, we want to keep the existing buffer. I know one of the conditions that, that staff has now recommended is to have landscaping plans. We don't have a problem with landscaping throughout. We don't have a problem with installing streetlights. The city has asked, um, that we install streetlights along Highway 53. The developer is agreeable to that. In fact, we plan on installing, um, a candle foot for each square foot of streetlights. So there'll be streetlights along the street and then interior lighting throughout, but the interior lighting will be done in a way that it won't be on, going off the side onto the adjacent property owners. It's just meant to light up the parking lot and the buildings. Another thing that the city has asked for is a nature trail and this, we are willing to, to install a nature trail for the residents to use. If you look around the gazebo and the community garden, we think that that area on the bottom would be a good place for a community garden around the buildings and around that natural buffer that we already had. One of the other things the city has now asked for is that the property be at least 80% brick and that is something we're willing to commit to, that the property be 80% brick. So of, of the six conditions, with the exception of one, we think we have, going to have no problem com- doing that, meeting it or exceeding it and we're happy to do it. We'll talk a little bit later about the last one. Um, I've got quite a few pictures because I think it really helps to see the pictures. So if you see this site, this is the aerial view. They're commercial on either side right now of this property and those are the existing tree lines that they hope to, to keep on either side, that existing buffer. They don't plan on doing anything with that. And then you see the back of the property is, so the arrow goes to the, basically the back property line of, of this property. This is the back of the property, which shows that there are residential right behind it. So all to this, to the bottom of the property is all residential. And there's also quite a bit of residential between, um, this parcel does not immediately go up against the airport. There are residential parcels between our parcel and the airport. And then this next slide shows across the street from the development. So once again, the arrow goes, that's the front of our property. Across the street is the develop, is the properties across the street and those are all, um, residential and I believe there's also a restaurant. So looking at a bigger overall picture, the property really is next to, um, all of this high-density commercial from the Home Depot and the Kroger to, to the right, to the left, it transitions into more residential. And so we think that this, this site is actually with its mix of commercial and residential, a nice transition between that existing commercial and that is, and the residential to the other side. Um, typically these types of developments, most cities and counties don't want to put in a more residential area. Most residents don't want this type of development or density or what you'd call multi-family to be in, in a traditional single-family home. I think most of you would agree, you wouldn't want this in a single-family subdivision. And so usually these are the types of sites that are preferred and that are looked for, both from a zoning and planning standpoint, but also because this is more attractive, um, to our residents. You know, the, the, the hospital is close by, um, to this site, which is one of the reason, reasons we were originally attracted to it because it is a senior property. Access to the Home Depot, the Kroger and the hospital, especially on a short bus ride, is something that our residents, um, would really appreciate and really look for. Just to compare, there is already one existing senior facility on Highway 53 in Jasper. It's the Retreat at Jasper and it was just built. It's actually an assisted living, but it is behind the Ingalls and it is very similar to this property, meaning that it's got all of the commercial to one side, residential surrounding it. And it's, um, I just want to note that the commercial property values around this development, since it's been developed, have not decreased. They've actually either stayed the same or increased. So we think our development will be similar to the Retreat at Jasper as far as the effect on property values and we believe that it'll actually be a benefit to the commercial that is next door to us. Just for your information, that's, that's a view from Highway 53 looking out at our property. So that's from the street. That's looking down the street. This is an example of one of our existing developments. We just wanted to give you an idea of what it would look like. There's the gazebo. We plan on having a gazebo at this property. There's landscaping. We typically like a lot of trees. We like that landscaping look. Like, once again, we're trying to make this be more of a club-like environment for our residents and not your traditional multi-family. Here's an example. This is our, one of Tischko's developments in Bad Osta. It's 100% brick, so I would anticipate the brick look to be similar to this development and that shows the type of landscaping that we would have at our properties. One of the things I did want to address, um, we had hoped to reach out, um, to the county and to the city to talk about the FAA. Unfortunately, we didn't hear anything back until, um, this meeting, so I understand people are traveling, but we did, when we got the concern at the last meeting, we did hire an engineer to do a consultant and they looked at the issues concerning the runway and they looked at the issues concerning the noise. And there is a noise study that was prepared, um, that addresses those concerns, which we've shared with the city and our expert's opinion was that this was not a concern for this particular location. And I want to show you, here's an excerpt of it. One of the things that was done was, um, noise studies of the existing noise and there was testing done at these four locations and this is just a very small part of the long study, but I'm going to save you guys from reading the whole thing. The FAA guidelines are not federal regulations. It's not a law and it says that, I think, the, the site that, that was quoted earlier came from the link, which is in this PowerPoint and it says that generally residential is not acceptable. However, it is really up to the local government to determine what is acceptable. And then the, the, the guidelines go on to have a chart of what is considered acceptable and what is considered unacceptable. So that's not a full picture of the regu- the guideline. This is a copy of the actual chart that is included in the guidelines and if you'll see, in some circumstances, residential could be considered compatible according to the FAA guidelines. And so based on the noise study that was done, the FAA guidelines say that it's going to be less than 65 decibels. So that means that the less than 65, if you can see, it's got it yellow on this chart and this is once again FAA's chart from those same guidelines, showing that it would be compatible for this location. Now, if the noise was above 65, then FAA would say that it is incompatible. And I think it's important to note that these are not rules, these are not regulations. These are just guidelines that the local government should consider when enacting their zoning ordinance and their comp plan. Um, so it's really just guidelines for the government and I do believe that under the guidelines and under our study that was conducted, that there's nothing in the FAA guidelines that prohibit this development because really it makes sense. I don't think most of us would want to have a house next to an airport when all we hear is airplanes going off all day, but we have no reason to think that that's going to be a concern at this site. One other thing I want to reach and I know Ms. Kiefer talked about it briefly, is that the comp plan in this location actually encourages a mixes of uses and it's not just mixed-use development, it's a mix of commercial and residential, which we think we probably meet that requirement. And one thing, and of all the places in the comp plan, this is one of the regu- one of the places where senior family is actually developed and preferred under your comp plan. So specifically, senior development is listed as preferred in this location and that's one of the reasons why we looked at this site to begin with. We already talked about this, but the existing commercial and the existing multi-family in Jasper is surrounded by commercial properties and typically multi-family properties are considered commercial. So we're not usually put in the same bucket for tax purposes, for property tax purposes, for regulations as far as sewer, as single-family development. So usually multi-family is considered to be more commercial. Traffic is always a concern and so that's one of the things that we wanted to point out, that as currently zoned, if this was developed to have a building, a retail building that would have the same square footage, there would be 3,884 trips per day. In contrast, if this is rezoned, we anticipate, according to GDOT's traffic manual, that there will only be 504 trips per day. So in other words, if this property is rezoned, we believe that the traffic would be extremely less than if it was left to be as its current zoning. Another thing is that's, that's, that 501 number is really just considering a typical multi-family and this is not a typical multi-family. This is a senior property. Seniors that are over 62 in our experience typically tend to drive less and most of them will take advantage of that transportation bus that is available to them rather than having, um, their own cars. They typically have less cars per unit and they typically tend to take advantage of our transportation bus, at least the seniors that want to live at our properties. So I think earlier I told you that there were six, um, conditions that were added, including asking that we build an eight-foot sidewalk with seven-foot landscape buffer between Highway 53 and our property, which we are happy to do. Asking that we do streetlights on the property, um, which we're happy to do. Asking that all of the utilities on the property, this isn't a condition, but it was in the staff report, asking that all the conditions, the under- Asking that all the conditions, the underground, I'm sorry, the utilities be underground. So like the power cords, which we have no objection to. We plan on doing that anyways. Having all the utility lines, the power lines, would all be underground on this property. You won't see them. The only concern we really had was about condition number two. And the reason we had a concern about that is that it required us to leave open connections to the property for the neighbors, so that the driveway could be connected to the neighbors in the future. And it also asked that we grant an easement to, it didn't say to whom, but I'm assuming they mean to the neighbors for that interparcial development. And as the lawyer, you can always take this with a grain of salt, but I do have to tell you, in my legal opinion, the easement is an unconstitutional request and violates Georgia statute. I think, I've lost my screen share. Can you still see it? This is the statute that I was referring to. And I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring it up, so please don't take it any other way, but to just mean that typically, Georgia has made it very clear that you cannot require easements to condition a rezoning because it's considered an unconstitutional taking. So we would say that this would be a violation of the statute. But more importantly, this picture here, and this is really why we're concerned, is a picture of the city boundaries. So the city of Jasper boundaries go along Highway 53, but for some reason, it only includes our parcel. So you see that dip on the property line? That is our parcel that is within the city of Jasper. The parcels on either side and below it are all considered the county. And those would not necessarily be under the future control of the city of Jasper. So we could leave room for connections in the future, but we want to make sure we don't have a road or a driveway to nowhere on our property. So we're certainly willing to leave open room in the future to talk about connecting the parcels. We're not necessarily against that. But we think without any type of plans for future development on those adjoining parcels, that we don't want to be committed to something in the future that may never necessarily happen. And at the same time, the neighbors may want to develop it and have the parcel connect maybe up higher on the parcel, the driveway, than where we are. So we don't want to build a stub, is what the city calls it, to connect to the neighboring parcel if it's not where the neighbor actually wants it to be in the future when that property is developed, if that makes sense. Rather than having a driveway to the side of the property, we prefer to leave it as trees and prefer to leave it as those trees that are there right now and leave more room for a nature trail for our residents. So we're not necessarily against easement, the condition, too, but I just want to be clear that we think that it might be better to talk about in the future rather than holding this site to something that may not have the same concerns in the future. Two other things I want to talk about briefly. The staff report asked that we do a landscaping plan and asked that we do a utility report. And it asked that we do this before Monday. This was the first that we had heard about such a request. My client is happy to do a landscaping plan and happy to do a utility plan, although that's typically something that happens closer to when you get a building permit. It's not usually required, the zoning, and I don't believe Jasper has required it of its other applicants. But I do want to let the city know that that plan is approximately $50,000. And so I don't know if we'll be able to do the utility plan prior to Monday because it would require engineers and surveying at this point. But we are happy. I think the concern was just that the utilities be underground. We are more than willing and happy to commit that we will have all utilities underground, if that is a concern. So I do have several other people on the call available with me. Steve Johnson is here, if you have any questions about the development of the property or about what amenities and things like that that would be there. We also have Mr. Thompson, who's on the call, who could also help give some advice about the values of the property, the zoning. And then in addition, we have the actual study that was conducted by our engineers about the noise and the airport issues. So with that, we'll turn it back over to the city. And if you have any questions, we're here and available to answer them.
Ms. Preston, I thank you very much for your input and your presentation. At this time, does anybody on the board have any questions that they would care to ask this consortium? Having heard none, I had just two or three quick questions for you. Is DOT on board with this type of facility? Coming out onto 53 is the only form of ingress egress to this property?
You know, I'd have to defer to the developer on that, but I will say if they're not, they won't let us have access. So, because if it is a state highway, GDOT will typically, if they think an egress ret lane is, or a turn lane is required, they will make us develop that before we are able to get a building permit.
I know that they're starting to tighten up a little bit on their driveway access to some of their more popular routes. I'm not sure if 53 categorizes yet, but it's well on its way. The other one is, how did you arrive at the number of units based on the zoning or based on your proposal for this property with it being just a little over six acres?
I'm gonna defer to Jeff or Steve on that one.
You or me, Jeff?
Go ahead, Steve.
We met with the city several times. We came up there and asked you guys kind of what y'all would like to see and what y'all would want, you know, as far as the development. And 80 units is kind of what it takes to make our operations run. And it's, the smaller, we would like to go to 120, but I think your zoning didn't allow for that, so that's how we came to that number.
Brandon, if I could ask you a quick question. What's the maximum number based on that acreage that is allowed permissible by the zoning for if we were to go to that R3?
I have to, I don't have the information at my fingertips, but essentially, you take the total square footage of the exact acreage. So the 43.560 acre at the number of acres, and you take away the 7,500 for the first unit, and then our ordinance then calls for additional 3,000 square foot for each additional unit. So it's a very different calculation than customarily is used. So that's why I don't have a readily available six units per acre or eight units per acre. It's a formulaic type, but I can certainly ask others to, let's see here.
And also, does it take into account your right-of-way for your roads and any floodplain that may be on the property?
The way the district standards are, I don't believe they really extract some of that from it. It's just a purely formulaic square footage, total square footage, eliminate or reduce the first unit by 7,500 and 3,000 per additional.
And we're just gonna talk to you. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, with regard to the 80 units, we've done demographic analyses and have noted that in terms of folks being able to have someplace to age in place in Jasper and have an independent living rental environment with no, with no maintenance required by them is extraordinarily limited. And we feel very confident in the demographics that we have supporting our 80 units.
And Mr. Sherman, just in terms of a six-acre side at the 43.560, based on the formula, it would yield you about 80 per unit. So they're well within the density as per.
Does the city currently have any kind of provisions with a maximum number of family structures before it requires a secondary entrance due to safety concerns on 53?
I'm not aware of any.
Does any of the other board members have any questions currently for the gentleman and Ms. Preston? I apologize.
I'm not a board member, Mr. Chair, but this is David Sython, the city attorney. I was gonna ask, instead of a $50,000 landscape plan, whether at, at least at council meeting, they could show sort of typical landscaping at prior developments just to give the council an idea about what they typically do in the design of such developments. And in that way, the applicant wouldn't have to spend $50,000, but I think it would give the council some feeling for, you know, what the property would look like in the after situation.
And this is Emily Preston. I don't think that would be an issue at all. The real concern was just having plans that would show the underground utilities because those are very expensive. But we will commit to underground utilities, and we could certainly do some more information about landscaping.
This is Rebecca. The intention of that was to conceptually indicate your intention, not construction documents.
Yes. So what you're, yes, we would do a design plan, is what you would, what I think you're asking for.
Yeah, at most.
And we have no, that would be, we'd be happy to do that. And, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, there you go, Rodney. I thought we lost you. Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if there's any other input or do we have any other participants who would like to voice their concerns or their support for this project?
Rodney, this is, I'm sorry, Rodney, this is Phil. I have a quick question.
Okay.
When was the noise study performed?
It was performed, I believe, two weeks ago. If you give me a second, I can pull it up.
It was after the last, after the last meeting where we tabled it, we ordered the study.
So then, basically, within the last 30 days?
Yes.
So I would add to that, that you, the noise study is performed during the COVID-19, when we essentially have almost no aviation traffic, in particular, the business traffic. So with our airport now in the top 20 base aircraft of 103 in Georgia, that's not a normal sample of the noise that we would typically have. That's it. That's all I was pointing out.
This is Emily Preston. And do you want to just say, because of the type of funding this property is gonna receive, no matter what, our noise is gonna have to be less than 65 decibels? So that really isn't a concern for us because we have, if we can't meet the FAA guidelines, then we're not, we don't think it's gonna be a problem.
Can I ask, this is David Sython, one more question about the noise study. I think I understood Mr. Everly to say that the airport was contemplating an extension of a runway by 500 feet. And I don't know if it's 500 feet towards this development or away from this development. But Mr. Everly, could you sort of tell us what that plan is and whether that would have any impact on additional noise that this development would have to handle?
So essentially, when the aircraft turns final, when it's in the pattern above the runway, it's about 1,000 feet above the runway elevation. So when, as it steps down to turn into final, and the end of the runway is right off of the Salem Road there and some of the graphics, it was just off of the photo. So right now, the approach comes in over this area now. So what you see is the rise in decibel levels as the plane gets closer to the ground. Once it's on the pavement, the noise doesn't carry very far. So when it's in that final approach segment, taking off as well is when you get those noise, the decibel levels up. So there's a 500-foot extension that's planned that direction, that will carry out. But effectively, some of the contrary, the noise decibels are not gonna be a lot different of what they have now versus then. I'm just pointing out that doing a noise study now, when there's no traffic, is, you're not gonna get the same results as you would in a normal situation. But the end of the runway is right there at Salem Road, right by 53, right there.
Just want to say thank you.
This is David Keller. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. If they're gonna add 500 feet to the runway, will that give them enough room to bring in small executive jets?
We already have small executive jets now. The runway length, all runway length does is adds to the stage length, it's the amount of fuel they can take on, so they can fly farther. And in a rough, this is very rough information, but at 5,000 feet now, typically, an aircraft have all different operating capacities. But you could say roughly that at 5,000 feet, you could load up with fuel and get off the ground in 5,300 and have a stage length that's probably a Texas, Iowa, Wisconsin, New Jersey type of length. You add 500 feet, they're allowed, the same aircraft, not larger aircraft, same aircraft can take on more fuel. They can be heavier. They need a little bit longer runway. That gets them more like a Denver footprint. At 6,000, you could reach the West Coast. We don't have enough room to go to that. So it's not, it's not an uptick in the size of aircraft using the airport, it's just how, how much fuel they can take on from a weight standpoint. So we already have, if you go to the airport Facebook page, you'll see, you'll see that we get a significant amount of business jet traffic now.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Yeah, here's another dumb question. If the aircraft are heavier, are the engines louder?
So you have the max noise, where you use full thrust on takeoff. So that's where you get that, just as they're off the ground, climbing up to get the pattern altitude or beyond, that's why off the end of the runway is where you get those highest decibel level. Once they're on the ground, it doesn't carry very far. And when they're very high in the air, it doesn't, you know, pick up the sound either. So off the end of the runway is where you get the highest decibel level.
Mr. Everly, I have a question. Are the counties still in contract with the military for their military vehicles coming in and refueling?
Yes.
And Mr. Buckingham, this is Ms. Preston. If I could, I do believe, we did have military vehicles as part of the noise study. So they did capture that, and those weren't a concern. As far as, you know, future development that may or may not happen, we don't believe it's gonna be an issue based on our engineer's studies. But if it is, that would be certain, that we would certainly have to take into account then. But once again, the funding is gonna make this be below 65, so we really don't have a concern about it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have spent so much money already, okay?
Agreed.
There are houses in between us and the airport already.
I think the houses are to the west of the runway, to the side, not off the end of the runway.
Mr. Douglas, is there anybody that has been scheduled or has requested time to to speak, addressing this issue, other than those that have already spoken?
I do not see anyone, uh, any of the participants that have requested through a virtual hand raising. Uh, however, I would encourage, uh, Mr. Chair, that if there is anyone that would like to speak on this application, that, uh, to go ahead and recognize themselves, um, and...
If there is somebody that would, uh, wish to voice their concerns, either one way or the other, uh, now is your opportunity to do so, uh, if not, we'll move on. I'm not hearing anybody, Mr. Douglas, or you seeing anybody that's raised hands, or voicing a concern, or can't get in contact through Zoom?
I do not see anyone, I'm going to go ahead and unmute everyone, all persons unmuted.
All right, last call for anybody that has any concerns or any comments addressing this issue before the council, or before the planning commission. Having heard none, do I hear a recommendation or a motion from the planning commission, either one way or the other?
This is John, I, I, uh, make a motion that we approve this application.
This is David Keller, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, uh, is there any other comments, or any discussion? Having hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Having heard none, it will pass.
And, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, just for the record and for the recording, uh, could I just get the, uh, planning and zoning members, uh, I only heard a couple, if I could just get them to, um, state their name and their vote, just for the record, please?
Absolutely. Uh, Rodney Buckingham, aye.
John Kleinberg, aye. David Keller, aye.
Joanna Curran's aye.
Okay, thank y'all, just wanted to make sure we had it.
Okay, now that we've got it, uh, thank you very much for all your input, your thought. Uh, we'll go on to item B, as a public hearing, a request to rezone parcel number zero-three-zero-C-oh-five-zero, at ten-sixty-seven Philadelphia Road, from C-two to R-three. Uh, Mr. Douglas, if you'd give the presentation, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, and for the commission and other participants, uh, we do have, uh...
Hello? Hell no, I just told my buddy, I was like, I'm getting drunk, we're get, about to get shot down.
Hey, who's on the line?
I'll tell you what, I-
Okay, I went ahead and muted that, I, I will, uh, uh, state, please, uh, make sure that your device is muted, as we can hear, and it is being recorded. Um, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, commission members, um, once again, we have, uh, our land use, um, consulting firm, um, and Ms. Rebecca Kiefer is, uh, on, as well as our city attorney, David Siphon, um, this is, um, been in your packet, I will bring up the, uh, agenda item momentarily, and I will go ahead and unmute, uh, Ms. Rebecca, so she can give an analysis. Rebecca, you are unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me, Rebecca?
We can.
All right, so, um, the applicant for this project has requested a rezoning of, uh, eight point zero-two acres, to allow the construction of eighty age-restricted multifamily units. Uh, the site is located along Philadelphia Road, and it's an undeveloped tract. The development is comprised of just one, uh, building, that, uh, fronts on, uh, Philadelphia, it's on the northern end of the site, um, and by the minimum lot requirements of the zoning ordinance, a development of this size, uh, requires a minimum of five point six acres, so any future phases will need to take into account, uh, that there is only, uh, an additional two and a half, uh, less than two and a half acres, um, that, uh, is remaining, to be able to add any additional density. Um, there are a number of site and project details, uh, that should be, uh, included to, just to give, um, you guys, uh, the city council, some additional information, to be able to make a decision, uh, so those were included in the staff report as the unknown factors, um, the application did not include, uh, proposed onsite amenities, um, any kind of indication of what landscaping they intended to include, any kind of pedestrian circulation throughout the development, and building material specifications, and all these come from, um, different policy, uh, preferences in the comprehensive plan, uh, so to be able to make an assessment on whether or not they are meeting those, uh, we have requested that they include those. Um, and then, so, staff was able to use the criteria in section ninety-four dash forty-three to review, uh, rezoning requests, and, uh, recommend approval of the request with conditions, and, um, again, the details of that analysis are, are provided in your staff reports, um, but notably, the, the policies in the comprehensive plan support opportunities to age in place, uh, this is located within the suburban in Phil character area, um, and, um, suggests that future development should improve the quality of life of residents. So, um, staff found that the proximity of the subject site to adjacent services and uses bolster those policy recommendations, uh, that are provided within the comprehensive plan, and, um, in keeping with this character area. So based on this finding, staff did recommend approval with, uh, the four conditions that are provided for you in the staff report.
Hello, Mr. Chair?
You've got anything?
I got you, uh, unmuted now.
Oh, okay, I, I, um, have you got anything else that you would like to add before we go to Mr. Waters?
Uh, nothing further to add.
Okay, Mr. Waters?
I will unmute him.
Same thing is on the, same thing is on the other parcels, uh, all the other houses have been done, signage has been put up, uh, we haven't had anybody, uh, question, uh, we had one person that did call, just wanted to know what it was, we expressed that, they may be on the program tonight, I don't know if they ever got on it or not, but, uh-
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Everything, everything is, uh, just went as it should, up to this point.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, is there a representative for the project, or for the applicant?
Yes, sir, I'm here, I'm Philip Searls, um, oh, can everyone hear me, I hope? Yes, sir. Um, I am the president of the Beverly J. Searls Foundation, the applicant for the site, and I apologize for my very bad, uh, bandwidth there, apparently, we're, we're not getting a great service down here in Cobb, but if it's okay, I would like to share, um... Is this pulling up here, I hope? Let's see here. So, there were some questions regarding the, uh, I hope everybody can see this presentation, um, I wanted to, I didn't, I didn't do a full-scale presentation, uh, like the applicant ahead of me, but I wanted to give some ideas to, um, to the, to the commission about some of the caliber, the quality of the work that we, we do. Uh, the foundation is, uh, we've been in business now for, uh, our principals have for over forty years, and, and here in Georgia, working in real estate, and for the past a little over twenty years, we've been mo- mostly focusing it on senior housing. Uh, I have included a couple photographs of different communities, uh, you can see the, not only the caliber of the actual construction, but we also our landscaping plans, uh, this is consistent with everything we do, we kinda live by the, the grandma rule, you know, only little places you put your grandma in, so, um, we, we think that, uh, ev- everything we do, we, we have, we definitely take a high amount of quality and, and pride in, in our construction work. Um, doesn't hurt that I'm, you know, living less than thirty-five miles, or forty-five minutes away from my site here, so I can get up there quite often. Uh, I included the site plan, um, and the, the four conditions that, uh, that the staff has recommended, we have no problems with whatsoever. Um, one thing that we might ask for in the future would be potentially a reduction in the parking, uh, we currently show with the, with the zoning in place, y'all have a, would require a hundred and sixty parking spaces for the eighty units, um, would provide studies that we've done that show that, uh, that's probably a bit excessive, we would wanna keep some of that land to do some more, uh, green space on the properties, to allow some more trails and that type of stuff. I don't know if y'all are seeing this or not, here, let's take a look.
Not at the moment, but we did your, we got your presentation with the pictures and things like that earlier, so I believe, uh-
The information- Yeah, I am pulling up the information from the packet, uh, I don't think we were able to see your share screen, so...
If I'm able to, yeah, I've got it in here if I, uh, can't do it, okay.
You should, you all should say zee.
Yeah.
This is consistent with our construction, um... In the, uh, top corner, this property is actually the closest one to y'all, it's down in Mayleton, um, or else the one on the top right is in Gainesville. Uh, we would always be happy to take, you know, to take any member from planning, from uh, planning and zoning, or from city council, to tour any of our communities, um, we believe, we, we know these all stand the test of time, um, I, I, as the old, as the other applicant said, we are also long-term owners of our communities, we don't believe in selling them, we believe in providing a, a great place to live for our seniors.
Yeah, thank you very much, is there anything else that's, no, that's quite all right, we're all playing in the same game now, uh, is, do you have any other, uh, things that you'd like to present, or?
Yeah, um, I, I would say, you know, and everything that Emily had said for the other applicant would be consistent with what we will, we've been providing as well. Um, I do wanna also point out that, um, with an approval, uh, we're both going for the same type of financing, only one of these deals would be approved, so I don't want the planning, planning and zoning commission to feel like that this would, you know, two approvals would represent two developments, um, at most, there would only be one development getting built.
Okay, that's fair enough. Uh, does any of the other planning commission members, uh, have any questions, or comments, or concerns at this time? Having heard none, uh, Mr. Douglas, do we have anybody that cares to give comment from the public, or, uh, any, uh, questions or concerns that they may have?
This is, uh, David Siphon, uh, city attorney, uh, the applicant said something about wanting to reduce the number of parking spaces, and I was just curious as to where visitors would park at the facility if parking spaces were reduced.
So that's a good question, sir, um, we've actually shown, not only through our communities, but other develop, other senior developments in, uh, in the Atlanta area, that for independent living, which, that, which this is, parking ratio of about point eight, uh, spaces per unit, is more than sufficient for both, uh, residents and, uh, um, and guests, we would not ask for that low, we believe that a community such as this will most likely have more cars, uh, more, more able-bodied seniors driving around, so we would probably look to reduce our parking ratio from a hundred and sixty units to maybe a hundred and ten units, that would allow every resident to have a parking space, uh, we'd only have about three or four employees on the property, um, and so it would still allow about twenty-plus spaces for visitors.
Mr. Douglas, the only question I have is, uh, that I can think of at the moment is, does the city have the capability of handling a three-story structure from a fire standpoint?
Uh, I do not know of any, uh, I guess, issues at this moment, um, items that would get addressed during the planning process, such as any sort of, uh, uh, fire-related, um, firewalls, uh, that would just be through our consulting firm, Clark Patterson Lee, and our fire marshal, but, uh, during this preliminary, um, planning and zoning, we don't have any issues.
Okay, all right. Uh, does anybody else have any questions or comments, before we open it to public cons, questions or concerns?
This is Rodney, uh, you did comment in our meeting, previous meeting, that you would have elevators to, for these, uh, folks to be going up and down to the third floor, if there's, there won't be stairs on it, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct, we believe, all of our communities are what we call stepless, uh, there is not, we don't own a single unit that a resident has to use a stair to get to.
David Siphon, the city attorney, again, um, with the three-story unit, do you have to put in a sprinkler system for the building, or?
The, uh, the property would be, the property rated R thirteen R, which is, uh, it would be fully sprinkled, but it's not, um, you know, there are two-hour fire separation walls, dictated by the fire marshal, but there's not, it's like a one-hour wall, can y'all hear me, I'm sorry? Um, but there, you know, there'd be one-hour walls between the units, one-hour fire-rated walls, uh, they're not, um, the, the best example I can give the commission is, the difference between a, a full thirteen and a thirteen R, is if your closet hasn't been sprinkled, you're a full thirteen, uh, but there are sprinkler heads in bedrooms, and living rooms, and the kitchen, uh, throughout the rest of the community, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas, is there anybody that has a question or concern on the, on your screen?
I did not see any virtual hand, and however, I will unmute all participants at this time,
Again, this is the last opportunity, if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, dealing with this project specific? Having heard none, do I hear a recommendation or a motion, I apologize, it's getting late in the evening, a motion for, uh, one way or the other for this project?
This is David Keller, I think the motion that we approve the project.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Tom Kleinberg, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do, all in fa, uh, any other comment or concerns? Having heard none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, any opposed? It has been passed, and we will pass it on to the city council. It has been passed and we will pass it on to the city council.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening. Thanks for coming to Jasper.
Last item this evening is a public hearing to request a text amendment to the Jasper zoning ordinance for inclusion of a new zoning district of dense residential infield, DRI dash six. Uh, Mr. Siffen, if you would give the presentation, please?
Sure. Uh, David Siphon, city attorney. Uh, Brandon, can you bring up a copy of the ordinance so that the board can see it while I'm talking about it maybe?
Yes.
Basically, what this ordinance is designed to do is, uh, to within the residential communities of the city where appropriate, um, and considering the zoning standards in making that determination as to whether it's appropriate. You got a couple of things going on. One, uh, you have a lot of small lots of record that are legal lots, um, but they are smaller than what all the current zoning ordinances or zoning districts would allow for a residential structure. And so, uh, you have that situation and then you have a situation where a developer would want to, uh, again, in appropriate areas, uh, develop, uh, basically small housing on small lots that would be attractive to both first-time buyers and/or senior citizens. Uh, they don't want as much yard, uh, in landscaping to take care of and don't want as big a house to take care of. Um, and obviously with smaller house, it's more economically feasible, um, for both seniors and for first-time buyers to have this housing development, uh, available. So we tried to create, uh, a zoning district that would allow that, that typically, um, would allow, uh, lot sizes of 7,260 square feet, which works out to about six houses to an acre of land. Um, and it has, uh, certain requirements. The city is looking for that this would be, uh, stick-built homes on site. Uh, with the heated floor area of the homes be a thousand square feet at least. Could be bigger, that you're not going to have a huge lot, so you're not going to have a huge house. Um, and we create, uh, uh, minimum lot width again, that you're not going to have, um, uh, a large lot to work with. So we reduce the size of the minimum lot width. Um, I will say that this zoning district is contemplating that for the most part, we would see single-family detached dwellings that would be stick-built houses. Um, due to prior case law, um, modular homes would be allowed also in the district as a conditional use when consistent with neighboring areas. And a modular home is sort of a prefabricated home, but it's got to have a permanent foundation and got to be permanently affixed to the lot. Um, and at least for most residential areas, that results in the owner, uh, taking care of that home and keeping it up and treating it like a stick-built house, um, for the most part. So this new district is trying to meet, uh, residential housing need for first-time buyers and also senior citizens that, uh, either can't afford as much house or don't want to have to deal with as much house. And, uh, and allowing for a little bit greater housing density than any of our residential districts currently allow. Um, and so that's my explanation in a nutshell. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions in the board out.
Thank you, Mr. Siffen. Siphon, I apologize. Uh, does anybody have any questions at this time for the gentleman?
And Rodney, if I could, uh, from a staff perspective, what we wanted to do is, is work in concert with the elected body. Uh, we had identified, Hello? Yeah, I'm still here. Okay. We identified the need for incorporating, uh, or at least looking at other zoning districts. Uh, currently there have been, uh, I guess, a question about what our established districts are. Uh, you'll notice on the screen, we do have, uh, some zoning districts. However, this is just another, uh, opportunity for the, uh, community to explore. Um, so with that, um, I stand ready to answer any questions from the commission member or, oh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, I've got, uh, one question, having heard none of the others. Uh, I have seen reports where it says that, uh, the cost benefits to a municipality or a county, uh, for a structure of a house, uh, it's basically that municipality or county will go in the hole unless the value of that house is somewhere north of $400,000. Assuming that that report is still effective and still actual, what benefit would this, uh, new zoning classification be of the city?
Uh, Siphon, I guess what I would say to that is in a perfect world, we would all live in $400,000 houses, but, uh, we don't live in that perfect world. Um, currently there's a great need for affordable housing. Uh, not just for seniors, not just first-time buyers, but for everyone in between. And so it's a balancing act. Um, you're never going to have residential development, uh, be valued enough to pay for all city services. And so you've got to balance your residential development against your commercial and, um, manufacturing and industrial development. Um, but I think we would all agree that, I don't know that I would only, that I would want to live in a community that had 10 residential houses and the rest of it was commercial. Um, it's a balance, uh, in, you know, and part of that balance is trying to have a variety of housing, to have housing available for everyone. And I certainly agree that you don't want to go overboard and have only residential development. But at the same time, you know, you got to have residential development that people can afford. Um, and, and so there is a true need for this type of housing, uh, I think in the community. Um, and, uh, but, you know, at the same time, I don't think, I don't, in the future that this is the only type of housing that we can, uh, allow or permit. That we got to have a range of housing and that range of housing also has to be balanced against commercial and manufacturing and industrial development in, in order to keep your tax base right. Um, so it, it, it's a juggling act. I agree.
Kind of like biting a bullet. Does any other, uh, commission member have any questions or concerns at this time?
Yeah, this is David. I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, within the state, within the current city limits, do we have that much undeveloped property? Or undeveloped lot?
Uh, we have not done a thorough analysis of any undeveloped lots. Uh, part of this measure would be for infill development or redevelopment. Uh, but we don't have, uh, any amount of available acreage to provide tonight.
So, so basically we would be doing this and just vacant lots in regular neighborhoods or?
Uh, what, what would happen is this would be a requested new zoning. So if someone were to have, uh, an existing lot of record with a zoning of, uh, R1, uh, theoretically what they would be able to do is request of, of you all and the council, uh, this new zoning, uh, district. Uh, part of what we have done evaluating is our overall zoning ordinance. Uh, currently you'll notice, uh, the zoning districts of, uh, R3, uh, the high-density multifamily residential. Uh, part of the concern that, uh, staff expressed, um, and the reasoning behind wanting to incorporate additional options was to, uh, to provide for some level of cap associated with units per acre. Currently, if you had a, uh, a lot of existing record that was 10 acres and someone was R1 or R2, uh, that property owner could request R3 zoning designation. And as you all have, uh, uh, seen this evening, the calculation associated with that R3 multifamily ask uh, is a little unique, uh, in so much as they look at the square footage and then you can back into numbers. Uh, the best practice is to, uh, put some sort of, um, units per acre. Uh, so this one being a, uh, an infill or a opportunity to request six units per acre would then essentially be a cap. Uh, the planned unit development, which is another zoning classification, uh, that Jasper has utilized, has an eight units per acre cap. Uh, part of what we'll be doing with Clark Patterson Lee and Development Committee and, um, the chair of this commission is evaluating our overall zoning ordinance. Uh, it has been quite some time since these zoning districts have had some level of, uh, I guess, review. Uh, so to answer your question, uh, ultimately we'd like to create, um, if not new zoning districts, uh, modify some of the existing zoning districts and where appropriate, insert some additional options.
Has there been any thought given to possibly using this, uh, new one as your cap and removing all R3 altogether?
At this moment, we have not, uh, we've just had a very, very preliminary kickoff meeting with, uh, Clark Patterson Lee. Uh, so we've got several more months worth of diving into. So we have not dismissed any idea.
I'm sorry, I trampled on somebody. Somebody was having a question and I apologize. If you would want to speak up now. Does anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns dealing with this proposal?
Rodney, it's, uh, a question that the gentleman was asking, I think David was asking about, do we have many lots? Uh, uh, just for informational purpose, a few years ago, the city annexed them 1,600 acres from Philadelphia Road to Toppy Rock. Uh, there's tracks in there that range from 600 acres down to less than a half acre. Lot of these, uh, the ones that's been developed or built on, there's probably, uh, 50 different buildings, commercial, residential on that 1,600 acres. Uh, lot of them backed up to what would be smaller homes, smaller lots. Uh, some of them backed up to commercial properties. Uh, some of them are even talking about changing from commercial to residential. And so, uh, on the south end of town, we have lots. Right here in town, we have some lots less than an acre that are up for sale. But, uh, the house is either deteriorating or they need to, uh, you know, just tear this house down and bring it up to, build a new one or bring that one up to coast. And so there, there's lots of room, but there's so many different avenues this could go. Because we do have all different sized lots inside the city limit. City limit, because there's a lot of territory.
So basically what this proposal is, is if it were to receive recommendation tonight, it allows the city to have a new tool in its toolbox, uh, for somebody to go in and do a project based on this. They would still have to come before this commission in order to get us to sign off on it, to submit it to the council. So it's just basically given the new tool to utilize.
Yes, sir. We have to advertise the public hearing and to go through a process, uh, still taking this before the council, uh, for inclusion in the ordinance. And once again, this is just to add another layer of, uh, option. Uh, instead of just having the very, um, elementary zoning classifications of low density, medium density and high density. Uh, this is just, um, kind of a, an updated version of putting another zoning classification that you all will most likely, uh, begin seeing other, uh, recommendations of, uh, inclusion in it. So you're not assigning any parcel tonight, uh, with any zoning classification. Uh, this is just including a text amendment, meaning that you're amending the zoning ordinance or recommending, amending the zoning ordinance to include this additional district. Uh, and then, uh, thereafter, when persons want to examine how you, uh, rezoning, they still go through the same rezoning process.
Uh, is there any public comments that you can see on this?
I do not see any virtual hand raisings. However, I will go ahead and unmute all participants at this time.
But, does anybody have, anybody have any, uh, input that they would like to add to this, uh, proposal? Having heard none, uh, is, uh, do I hear a motion from the council giving recommendation or denial of this proposal?
Yeah, this is David. I recommend we approve.
We have a rec, uh, motion? Do I have a second?
This is John. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Having heard none, we give recommendation. Having heard none, we give recommendation to Mr. Douglas to carry it forth to the city council.
Thank you all.
Is there any other business that you have for this evening, Mr. Douglas?
I do not think there is anything further on the agenda, Mr. Chair and commission members.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Before you adjourn, I need to ask a few questions. This is the court reporter. I need to know John's last name and the proper spelling of Mr. Everby or Mr. Everly's last name, please.
This is John. My last name is Snevee. It's S-N-E-V-E.
And the spelling of Heberly is E-B-E-R-L-Y.
Thank you, that's good.
All right. Did we hear a motion to adjourn? I don't remember now. I think we did, didn't we? If not, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion in second, whatever it needs to be. I'm assuming all are in favor, but we're going to ask anyway. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, I certainly appreciate your help this evening. I know it was a long meeting, and it was an intense meeting, and thank you very much for your input. Thank you very much for your help and your consideration, and especially your time. And I wish everyone a very good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Rodney.
Thank you.
Thank you.